I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in the world.
I'd like to welcome everyone to our May 5th Select Board meeting. We've got a little bit of technical difficulty and the cameras here at the town hall don't seem to be cooperating for whatever reason, but the audio is so you can hear us. If you can't hear us, let us know as it goes on. Hopefully, the audio will hold out and we'll be okay. Just not going to be able to see what's happening out here. The first item on our agenda is to approve our minutes from our April 21st Select Board meeting, and I would entertain a motion to approve those minutes.
So moved.
So moved.
I'll second it.
Second.
So I'm not going to second.
Well, you made the motion, Heather.
I think three people made the motion.
Heather's the motion, Lee's the second.
Lee Gustafson?
Whatever.
Take your pick.
All three at the same time.
So, either way. Any changes, corrections, omissions, any issues with the minutes as printed?
I have none. I just want to comment on the new format with the line numbers. I think that's a great addition. Thank you.
This does make it easier to pick out a line if you have to get to it now instead of having to go through it. Anybody else? Any corrections, omissions, changes to the minutes?
Not at this time.
Lee, you okay with them?
I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. So all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? No. The minutes are all set. Next item is citizens' comments. If there was someone here that would like to address the board regarding an issue that is not on the agenda, now would be to do so. Are there any citizens' comments?
Yes, Arnie. Thank you. This is Frank Kelly up on Crow Hill Road this evening, and I am part of the Chester Conservation Committee as well as the Green Up Day Coordinator, and I just wanted to let the board know and the community know that we had a very successful Green Up Day. All of our, I believe, I looked and there are 88 miles of roads here in Chester, and as far as I know, all of them did get greened up. And it was a huge effort. Estimates are there were probably 150 or more people involved. The dumpster down at the town garage did get filled, which is always our goal. We wish it didn't have to be our goal, but it's always our goal. Along the way, people from all walks of life in Chester jumped in and helped out, which is really appreciated. I'd like to express gratitude to the Chester Conservation Committee for always being there and for being out there on Route 35 in the morning on Saturday, Mr. Janinas, as well as Mr. Parks and others. The Chester Town Hall folks always organize it well. Kirby Putnam and the Chester Road Crew were super. I checked in with Kirby a couple of times over, and he's been a rock star of this. Bags were out at Erskines, Chester Hardware and Whiting Library, and Whiting Library was actually able to find a way to decorate with the bags, which is stunning. We'll hear more about that in just a minute. And again, all the volunteers, and I know Ms. Chase as well as Ms. Dakin, and I'm sure Ms. DeRosa, Mr. Pinsky, Mr. Goski, and Ms. Diack, and Ms. Huntley were all out there as well. All of those volunteers, you know, just pitch in. And I'd like to say it's an arduous task, but it really isn't because these folks and all of the coordinators that run the different areas of town just make it really easy. I'd love to thank you personally, but I really don't know how many people are involved. I also wish that at some point in time, folks might be a little more careful and so that less stuff might have to fall out of their windows and then be picked up, you know? And if something does fall out, if it doesn't fall out as far out of your window, it's easier to get. Someone was sharing that if you go up Lover's Lane, there's a precipitous drop-off, which is really hard to get to. And so if the material just fell a little way out of your window, it would be easier than falling way out of your window. So that's just kind of a public service announcement of sorts. I'd also like to welcome news for today. It's the new Green Up Day co-coordinator, Ms. Carrie King from the Whiting Library, who has stepped up to co-coordinate and help with this project.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Green Up and Seed Down. We're all about it. We had a really, really fun day on Saturday, Green Up Day, tying it into the fun things we're doing at the library. You know, obviously, Green Up Day is something we want to promote at the library, but in addition, we were able to sort of attract people to visit us, not just to get their Green Up Day bags, but to check out the new seed library, to play at the seed sowing station, and there was seeds to give away plus lots of books, book sale stuff. So it was a really excellent way to meet new people in our community. It was just a, it was great. I look forward to doing it again and finding new ways to decorate with Green Up bags.
Yeah. I also would love to say that, you know, as we've lived here so long and now have grandchildren, my five-year-old grandson was here, and as his mother said, "He loves to find litter" and pick it up.
Does he want to be a co-coordinator, too?
Yeah, I think so. And we went down to the library, and it was so great. He got some seeds, and he's decided, and he took two maple tree seeds.
Oh.
Or not seedlings, it's seeds. I thought, oh, that's going to be great. I hope he, I hope he's around when those grow up. But, and also some little pots, the library had pots that already had like a small Cosmo seedling and other seedlings in it, and it was just wonderful. He would just enjoyed it so much. So it was a real treat, and thank you all.
Good. I'm glad he enjoyed it. We had a blast. We love to collaborate with other, you know, neighbors in our community, like the CCC. And yeah, we look forward to it. It's a, it's a treat.
Yeah. Thank you.
I think, Carrie, you were going to mention how Chester Townscape was a part of your program?
Thanks. I did want to mention and give a special shout-out to those other co-collaborators. The Chester Townscape gave the Whiting Library a box of sunflower seed packets that they had put together, personalized, beautifully done, with a sign saying how they had talked to the Chester Andover Elementary School third graders in December and came up with some ideas of ways that they could make Chester more beautiful, and the third graders said they want to see more sunflowers growing in Chester. So the Chester Townscape put that word into action, put these packets together, gave them to us to pass out, and we gave them all out. I think there's about 25 packets. They're gone. So if anyone's out there, we need more. Or plant your sunflower seeds because the kids want to see them. And yeah, it's just another great collaboration in our community of people who are just, you know, doing the green thing, and it's really appreciated.
Well, thank you, Frank, and everyone else that's been involved in the Green Up Day and what you guys all do for this community. And I tell you, it's things like this that really make me warm inside and proud to be a part of a small community when everybody gets together for the betterment of the town and stuff and does what they do. And Frank, I don't know how long you've been doing this, but you've been a rock as far as this Green Up Day thing has been going on, as long as I remember. You're always there at the helm, and I'm glad that Carrie has stepped up to give you a well-needed hand to take a little load off you there.
Indeed, indeed.
He's the man. Frank's the man. I look to his leadership all the time, so thank you.
It's a team effort, and again, at some point, maybe when I can get back in person, I'll do a roll call of all the folks because I know Heather's been part of it, Cynthia's been part of it, Barry, all of you folks have been part of it, and it's just really, it's a great opportunity. And I did mention, and this might be crossing, you know, boundaries, but for Julie Hans's benefit, I did mention to Green Up people that it might be advantageous to let the Green Up people know that with the Emerald Ash Bore inventory, these people know their highways and byways and might be able to go out there and be part of that Emerald Ash Bore inventory, which would be a wonderful opportunity for many people to get back involved or continue to be involved in citizen science and helping our communities. So I hope folks would consider that.
Thank you, Frank.
Yeah, that's a good point. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, everybody. I'd stay around. I got to go do my homework.
Oh, that's right.
See you, Frank.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Frank.
Thank you.
Are there any other citizens' comments? Anything from previous meetings, Julie? Nothing?
Nope.
I had one comment from a previous meeting. Understand that Joanne from the state is going to be doing a training about the ash trees, and do we have a date on that?
Yeah, I was going to bring that up under old business.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. We are looking at Monday, the 24th. I don't have a confirmation, but that looks like it will be the day. So as soon as I hear back from her with a solid confirmation, I'll get information out.
Great. Thank you.
That's a good segue into old business, which is the next agenda item. So let's go right to old business. Julie, do you have any, anything on the report for old business?
Sure. So public safety building, it's so far, things are on schedule. Date is looking like probably the third week in June to hand over the keys. Floors are currently being dyed. I was over there for a couple hours today, dyeing the concrete. It's really, things are really coming together very nicely over there. Everybody's getting pretty excited. So the color will be starting on the walls probably in a couple weeks. Doors and windows are going in. If you drove by today, you could see that there were solid doors and a couple of windows have started. Siding is anticipated to begin next week.
Wow.
So you'll really start to see a finished look to the outside of the building. So we are pretty much on track for that completion. The town pool, a lot of people have probably heard that we had vandalism at the town pool. An individual chose to ride their skateboard into the pool and tore the lining. We have finally gotten ahold of Renesas, who put that liner in five or six years ago. They're out of Indiana, so no local pool companies are able to repair it. So we have to fly somebody from Renesas out from Indiana to make the repair. We are looking at probably $2,000 to $3,000 for that. So knowing that there has been some vandalism at the Pinnacle in various places around town, I have spoken with the gentleman who does the security cameras for PD and the stuff for the new building. He gave us a quote. Matt and I met with him on Monday, and there, he would be putting four cameras on the pool house. Two would be telescopic, so two would be facing the pool side, one the pool up close, one telescopic that can bring in from the skate park and the ice skating rink would zoom those in, and then two on the front that would grab the tennis courts parking lot, and then one on the side that would grab the baseball fields and the pavilion that would be telescopic as well. So that's about $4,700 to have the four cameras installed. It's another $2,600. What we want is to have this monitored back at the PD. So those cameras there to just go back onto the police, to the police department, that system is about $2,800. That's what we're, we're wanting to do because once the town garage is done, we'll be putting a security system over there as well. Local town garages are getting hit. There's a lot of very expensive equipment in there, so we want to protect that as well. So that's, I'm just kind of keeping you in the loop. I think it's an important expense that we need with the amount of vandalism that is starting to take place. The police department has been working with other PDs in the area, trying to get any information that we can on anybody that's doing the graffiti or just the vandalism in general. Rick isn't going to comment too much on where they're at with that, but they are working on it. But I would like to go ahead and proceed with this equipment.
So you lost me with all the numbers. What's the total cost?
Seventy, sorry, $7,600.
Okay.
But $2,600 of it will be used for other things, other places.
And what bucket will it be out of?
Well, it's unbudgeted. So the $4,700 for the Pinnacle cameras will just have to take out of, will have to overspend the facilities line, and the same thing for the $2,600 for the, for the system, you know, for the monitoring system itself. We'll just, we'll have to take out of a facilities line and overspend that line. But I really don't want to wait another year. I mean, for another budget cycle.
So unfortunately, we can't.
Need a liner repair. Is that covered by insurance or?
Well, our deductible is $1,000.
Okay.
So we're waiting to get the final estimate to see if it's really worth it.
Okay.
So.
So do we need a motion? Do we need the thought process?
No, I just, I'm just kind of letting you know that that's what we're going to do, and we'll monitor, you know, we'll try to underspend other places.
Okay.
But I think it's important enough to get that stuff up and going, and we're hoping that just the, the word out there that we are starting to put security cameras up will be enough to deter any more vandalism, but it's unfortunate. It's a brand-new liner, 25-years-old, $100 dollar liner.
Somebody, along the lines of graffiti, somebody I was talking to on Sunday mentioned that some of the dumpsters on the green are getting hit with graffiti, so.
Are they? I haven't seen that.
Everybody looks towards you, Scott, when anything's mentioned about the green or something.
He monitors the garbage cans up there. Okay. I'll ask the guys about that. I haven't, I have not heard that one yet.
Okay.
So I'll ask the guys.
Okay. Thank you. I know it's on the bridges in a few places. I'm ready to get a can of paint. I'm getting tired of looking at it.
Then we'll have to throw you in the slammer for graffiti.
Yeah, well, it'll be gray graffiti, so they can do what they want.
And then lastly, just an update on the signage. So I still, having not heard from the Transportation Information Council, I spoke with SE Group, and what we have decided to do is, I wrote a letter to the chair of that committee, let them know it's been two years, there's been no action, we feel like we've waited long enough, we are proceeding with our plans, and please reach out to me and let me know if you have anything to add. I, of course, got a response within 15 minutes. It's taken two years, but this one time I got a response. And he just, just again explained, you know, the issues with COVID, which I totally get, but every other council in the country is meeting via Zoom. There really is no excuse. So we are going to proceed with our plan, and I know that it will require an 1111 permit from our, from the Transportation District. So we may not get real far, but we are going to keep proceeding, getting costs from sign fabricators. There's four signs in particular that we're looking to do this year. They will, and they're the four signs that will be questioned, but they're the ones that are in the Village Center that resolve the wayfinding issue, which is directing people to the green. So those signs that say, you know, shop, dine, stay. There's four of those throughout the village, and so those are the first four that we would be doing this year. So we're out to bid on pricing, to sign fabricators for that, and I'll keep you in the loop, but.
So the state's not holding us up on all of them? It's just the ones that are on the statewide?
They're holding us up on everything. They have not reviewed our wayfinding plan. We submitted it back at the end of 2019.
Wow.
We've gone back and forth. We didn't want to use the term Village Green. We wanted to use shop, dine, stay. And there's some stuff in the statutes that limits that. We're making an argument that we're not naming a specific business. We're just saying, we're directing people that there are restaurants, hotels, and such on the green. Village Green, to the group that we, that did this plan, we just don't feel that Village Green says that there's shops and activity taking place up there. And Chester has a unique situation in that 103 turns before our village. John Kessler, who is general counsel for, you see, Transportation, is the one whom I've been communicating with. He agrees with us, but the Transportation Information Council has to review a town's wayfinding plan, even signage that is on town-owned land, which I know sends me right through the roof. But it's something we have to, we have to have permission from them. But they have been dragging this for, the discussions have been taking place for two years. We submitted the plan at the end of 2019, and then when COVID hit, they went completely off-grid and have not met at all, at all. And we're going to miss another construction season. So I sent a letter saying we're going to do it anyway, and then I got a response.
That's unfortunate.
It is.
That it takes a letter that says we're just going to go ahead before we get a response, and then we finally get a response.
So I don't, I don't know that it will generate them to meet and do anything, but the next question is going to be, the sign fabricator is going to have to get a permit, an 1111 permit from District 2.
So.
I'd say put them up anyway, but that's not going to be my call.
We've made news for other, other things that we've done, so I mean, why stop now?
That one, I'll defer to the Select Board to make that decision, but anyway, so that's where the signs are at.
So does Ludlow, did they go through that same process? Because they have a sign right by the streetlight that says shop, dine, stay, or something very similar to that.
They may very well not have, or they did this years, or they did that years ago before all of these rules were in place.
Okay.
But our argument is, there are other towns who have done something even more egregious. I mean, Killington has signs in their state right-of-way that identify specific names of businesses that, in a plan approved by the Transportation Information Council. They approve specific names. We're not even looking to do that. So we have an argument, but I don't have permission.
And it doesn't sound like they're against our, our plan.
Well, John Kessler isn't. I, but the rest of the committee, I don't even think they've seen it.
Yeah, well, and that's the problem. I don't think it's that they're against it, they just haven't done what they're.
They haven't seen it. Correct. But it does, it does go against statute. Technically, we can't have those words.
So who are they accountable to?
The governor. They are appointed by the governor, which, who was emailed today.
Can we email the, call the governor?
I emailed his, one of his council people, yes, to see if we could get a response.
Okay.
They did not respond within 15 minutes. I thought that important.
Making random citizens do that?
Yes.
I would think so.
Yeah, absolutely. I can let you know who I got ahold of.
Please.
Yeah.
Thank you.
My next up will be our legislators as well. So that's all I have for old business.
Any other board members have any old business they'd wish to discuss or have any questions or concerns about?
I was thinking, I had written down here, do we have clarification on the Andover Road? I know that, reading the minutes from our last meeting, it was, it was stated that it's a town highway, but from Route 11 up to the Andover Line is, I mean, not a town highway, a state highway. Is that, was that, is that clarified that it indeed is a state highway?
I, I don't think we have as far as the exact definition of that, and I would think that maybe before we have the speed radar and the data come forward to the board, that we can get a clear definition exactly what that means when we call it a state road and it's.
It's a Class II.
It's a Class II state highway.
It's a Class II state road, yeah. Class II state highway.
Yeah.
Yeah. And so is Grafton Road. So is Route 35.
So those have to go the way we did before when we wanted speed limits changed coming in from the south near the school?
I don't know, no, because it's not a Class 1.
Okay.
It's a Class 2. I believe that we can, and I will confirm this, Lee, but my understanding is that we can go through a process, we have to generate a report that, that establishes why you want to reduce the speed limit, that this does have to get approved at the state level, but it's not quite the same process.
Okay. All right.
We don't need a state engineering report, I guess is the difference. We can do it ourselves.
Okay. And that will be helpful when we get the, more information about.
Based on the data, correct.
Route 11 to the Andover Line. I mean, whatever Andover chooses is one thing, but we're, we're hearing from our constituents who live in Chester on the Andover Road.
Yeah, yeah. And reasonable planning, we'll be putting those strips out soon, and they're going to put them in two locations on Andover Road.
Perfect. Thank you.
So that road is a Class 2, or that's what we don't know?
That is a Class 2.
Okay. So the definition is a Class 2 highways are those town highways selected as the most important highways in each town. As far as practicable, they shall be selected with the purpose of securing trunk lines of improved highways from town to town and to places by which their nature have more than normal amount of traffic. The selectmen with approval of the agency shall determine which highways are to be Class 2 highways.
Yeah.
So it gives us some jurisdiction over determining which is which.
Yeah.
And it makes sense, that road.
Yeah.
To be a Class 2 highway.
Yeah.
Yep. Good. Thank you very much.
So we could revisit that when we get the data from the speed strips and all that information on a future agenda item where we could decide what route we're going to go and what we're going to do as far as that road comes.
Great. Thank you so much.
We should have every, I have that slated for June.
So they're going to be out for a week or two weeks?
They're going to be out for two to three weeks at each location. So in June, this will be back to you in June.
I think the longer they're out there, the better picture you're going to have of what's exactly going on.
Absolutely.
Because when you have a short timeframe, it's always just, it could be a fluke.
And Ginger Roper had brought up a really good point, which was, she had emailed me a couple days later that it would be really helpful if we had them out there through Memorial Day. Because she says when the campground opens, that's where the activity starts to increase. So he's going to go through that time.
A busy time, sure.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep. Good. Great.
Any other old business? Hearing done, we'll go on to our next agenda item, which is the Fall Festival. I know there's a group of folks in town that have taken over the responsibility and all the work for continuing the tradition of this Fall Festival that's been going on for a lot of years, and it's a lot of work and a lot of time done by a lot of volunteers. And Julie, can you help us out with this?
Well, you've got a group here. Most of those individuals are here. They're expanding. I've attended a, a meeting, and it, they've got a lot of exciting things. So I'm just, I would say just let it, let them present what they want to do, and.
Sure.
It's a bigger use of town property, so.
So I just, I want to get your names, everybody, and when you speak, you're going to have to come up to the microphone to, to speak. So Lee Whiting, Scott Blair, I don't know the other two folks here.
Lauren Ingersoll.
Lauren Ingersoll.
Yep.
And?
Shannon Parker.
I'm sorry?
Shannon Parker.
Shannon Parker. Lee Whiting?
Go ahead, Lee.
Thanks for having us. We started with a clean slate because we took it over from the Rotary, we chatted in 2019. They couldn't have it last year because of COVID. We've set up an LLC. It's called the Chester Community Events because we want to expand upon this and do other things throughout the year, potentially. We've kind of changed the name. It's going to be, instead of the Chester Fall Festival, it's going to be the Chester Festival on the Green. We thought it was important to put on the green to draw people to that because I believe we are going to have some competition this year because out at the American Legion, they're going to have a fair and craft things going on on a weekly basis as well. So we wanted to designate it was on the green. The timing is going to be the same as it always has been, September 18th and 19th. The time is going to be 9:00 in the morning, and we're asking until 8:00 at night. The actual green for the booths is going to close at 4:00, but we want to have a music element that will go on in the evening on the Friday night, Saturday night, and probably not that late on Sunday because things will wrap up. We're going to be celebrating our Vermont agriculture this year. We're going to utilize, or we're going to ask for permission to utilize behind the historical building, that field back there. We want to do an agricultural element back there with anything to do with Vermont agriculture, whether it be forestry, maple sugaring, farming, demonstrations of all sorts.
Games.
Right. We're also going to have a local live music element this year. And we're planning on doing that in the back of the Colleton on the property back there. They have approximately two and a half acres back there. So we're going to have a music element with different acts that'll play throughout the day and into the evening. So it's going to be a big event this year. This can be a lot of, a lot of draw, this can be a lot of reason, you spend a lot of time in town. You're not just going to be coming in and looking at booths. There's going to be a lot of different elements, a food court, there's going to be all kinds of things that people will do and spend a good portion of the day here. What we'd like to ask for permission to use is the entire green. And we need the green shut down from eight o'clock in the morning till four o'clock for that park. So we need to get everybody out of there and use that for walking areas.
So can I just ask a question? Is that just Common Street, or you're thinking of closing down Route 11 at this?
No, you can't.
Just the inner part of the green.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that.
Right, not Route 11.
That's what I thought, just wanted to clarify.
That would literally take an act of Congress.
That's next year.
Right, right.
Cobley Field for parking. Possibly the Pinnacle Recreation Area back where this mobile club uses. If we've got crafters that are coming in with trailers and stuff, maybe we can send some of them over that way. Possibly the well site. I know that I was supposed to get with Jeff on that to see if that would be a spot where we could put some, not the general public, but actually the crafters or the people that are coming there for the agricultural part of the things. The Academy Building, front and rear. The Hearse House area. We also wanted to utilize the information booth, but we're going to close down the access to the restroom facilities in there. But we thought it would be good if we use the information booth as our information booth and drive people and drive traffic to that information booth so that it'll get used and recognized throughout the year. Some of the things that we're asking for support from the town was for security. We would request eight o'clock at night to six o'clock in the morning, Friday night and Saturday night, for security. All of us, we talked earlier about vandalism and so on and so forth. We can't have all these booths out there just sit and duck without any security. So that's something that we really hope.
Is that something the Rotary's done in the past? I know they've had security overnight.
They've, you know, paid for, paid security from.
Yeah, they paid for it.
With regard to security, I've talked to Rick to see if we have two officers, you know, one each night, or maybe one officer does both nights, I don't know. If they use the town's cruiser, then it's paying, then it's just paying them overtime. So this year in the budget, in the marketing line in the budget, I put in a few thousand for Fall Festival, knowing that there was going to be some extra expense. So if they utilize our PD, which Rick is fine with, it is considerably less because they're not having to pay for a cruiser and all the other things. It's quite a bit cheaper. And Rick said that he could find an officer, it would just be overtime for the officer.
And I would think it would be more effective that way.
I think so as well. And it could come out of the budget line that I already have.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great, thank you.
The other thing is, with the money that the town has set aside, we want to address portlets. That was one of the things when we met with all the downtown merchants and we gave them an opportunity to, you know, vent about this weekend and what it's done to them in the past. The biggest problem that they had was the stress that their businesses occurred with all of the people that were coming in to use the restroom facilities. And I think with COVID and restrictions, it's just unfair to ask all those merchants on the green to be able to keep their bathrooms clean and with the amount of people that could potentially come. The other thing we need access to was the power on the green and possibly the power in the information booth. The information booth is pretty limited on what we can use, but, you know, coffee pot or something like that. But you're not going to run too much off that one outlet in there.
Which is, we typically, that's something we typically provide. And the portlets is something that the town has typically paid for. This year, I think they're looking to do a few more and scatter them a little more throughout the event. So again, that money would cover that expense.
And there's power at the Academy Building too, right?
There is power at the Academy Building as well.
Great.
So that would be great. And then we're going to ask, obviously, that you would promote the event on the town website. I think that's just a given. And then we're also going to ask for permission to put the banner. We're going to create a banner and put it up on in front of the new veterinarian clinic. Put that up a couple of weeks before the event, maybe the end of August so that we get that Labor Day traffic to try to drive people through that. And then we plan on using this organization in the future to host future community events. And the jury's out on that, what that'll actually be. But hopefully you'll see a lot more activity now that we have this group that we formed. And they have a lot of passion for the town. And we want to drive tourism and drive visits. And we also want to, you know, have a great experience for the people that have moved here and that live here.
Sounds great.
That's exciting, so. You know, from having the Rotary bow out, and they did a fantastic job for all those years, to having that IF year in between where we weren't sure where we're going, to having this group step up the way you have and what's happening and what you're sharing with us. I think it's fantastic news. And I think anything the town could do to help facilitate this work that you're doing and to, you know, to reach the goals you're talking about is well worth it for sure.
One of the things that we really need, that I feel we really need is, we need to get a few people to step up. And for lack of better words, we need some Chester ambassadors. We need some people that are down there for the weekend, that are out there having maps of the event, directing people that are there, that are looking for bathrooms. And basically just kind of just be stewards of our town. And I think it would be good if we got some people that, you know, are engaging and, you know.
I have a couple of questions.
The town does have its own little booth there.
I have a question too.
Go ahead, Lee.
I'm wondering if you want to reach out to the high school, Lee, to the students for community service?
Yep.
To come down and do that? I mean, I know that in the past for Fall Festival, some of the different classes at the high school have had fundraiser places that, you know, people could come and they'd help fundraise for their class. But at the same time, they're always been willing to do community service. And they could be very helpful and beneficial and maybe even earn some credits at school. But that could be one source of people who could help out, directing and talking to people, handing out maps, doing the things that you all need them to do.
So they did reach out, we did reach out to the school, Lee, and they're going to put something out in July or August as we get closer to the date.
Great.
And those groups from the school, each class does have a booth on the green.
They do, but like the.
For fundraising and stuff also, so they're kind of there.
But there are groups, the Honor Society, the Interact Club, those kids are looking for scholarship hours. Amy has some comments.
Exactly. Great.
Are you guys going to have a website?
Yeah, I'm in the process of just kind of updating it, taking it around.
Okay. I know the Fall, Chester Fall Festival had a website, and it was a pretty nice one. I didn't know if you guys were going to go on.
Yeah, we're going to update it right now.
You need a motion to just.
The other thing is, what phone numbers would you guys like me to give out when people ask who to call? Because I give the pie shot, but I don't know.
Just to prove it as presented.
And then just give me permission. Okay. What's your cell phone number?
Is there an email address for the group?
There is, yes, Chester Fall Festival.
Okay.
At Gmail.
At Gmail?
At Gmail, okay.
I had a lead call today and she was trying to get ahold of you and she couldn't get through, so.
I have that email?
No, I think she was trying your cell phone number, but I don't know if she had the right one.
Yeah, I got a couple of phone calls there.
Let's put a couple of different numbers down just.
Okay, who else?
You can give mine too. It's unfortunately, it's 203-470-3232.
Okay.
So Amy, once you have those numbers down and that information, can you repeat it on the microphone so everybody can make sure they hear it and they get that information?
Yeah, oh, you put it in chat.
It's out there on the chat then?
Okay.
No, it needs to be on the Zoom because the chat doesn't come up when they're redoing it. So you need to speak it.
Okay, so I have Scott's phone number as 802-579-6831. And Lauren's phone number as 203-470-3232. And the email was Chester, ChesterFallFestival@gmail.com.
So if anybody has to contact you guys, it's okay to use those numbers or that email address to get ahold of you? Great, now that it's out there.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. And we're in the process right now of revamping the website and just replacing the logo, the name, the dates, getting everything updated. That should happen within the next couple of days.
Yeah, send me that, Lauren, when you get it, okay?
Okay.
Any questions from anybody while the group is here? So I would entertain a motion to approve the request from the committee as presented on the sheet that we have in front of us and authorizing Julie to coordinate any activities that are regarding this. So.
I'll make the motion.
We don't have to.
I'll second it.
As far as anything goes. So Lee Gusterson's the motion. Heather, you were a second on that?
Yes, please.
Any further discussion on it?
Just a big thank you. It's a lot of work, but it's such a great event.
It's a great event. And I, somebody said something about competition with the Legion. I don't think that's competition at all. I think it's just one more. Last year, they stepped up and had a wonderful presentation or kind of a mini-whatever festival in their field. And so it, you know, people could go lots of different places.
Lee, I didn't really mean it as competition, competition. It's competition for people knowing where to go.
Just the.
Oh, okay, okay, yeah.
Well, maybe there could be some cross referral.
Right. So what would possibly happen is when we're sitting here promoting the event, people are so used to seeing that having gone on all summer long, they end up going there and not realizing that it's on the green. That's all I meant.
Yeah.
Okay, I understand better now, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 And I'm not going to even ask about opposed. And I just want to add my thanks to the group that's doing this. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Take care.
Good night, guys.
See you later.
And the floor doesn't squeak when the people walk out?
And the floor doesn't squeak.
Isn't that amazing?
Got a new floor.
Next item on our agenda is, The Dance Factory is looking for permission to use Cobley Field.
So I think Kate DeRozia is on to speak to this.
I am, thank you very much.
Okay.
Hi, The Dance Factory, so Ashley Hanzel Browning that teaches at The Dance Factory is, has, is putting on a brand new piece called Fumbleena. And it's an original score of a Vermont composer. And she's looking to do two, two shows in Springfield and two in Chester. And we wanted to see if it was, if we would be able to use Cobley Field on June 25th and have the show at five and at 6:30. We would need to be there a little bit earlier to set up, like at three o'clock. We'd also ask if we could have a rain date on June 26th. And we would do a show at 10:00 and one at 11:30. And we'd need to be there at eight in the morning. So I wondered if that was available for our use. And the other thing, Julie, I forgot to ask you, is about electrical. Is there a power supply there for us?
There is power down there, Kate? I would.
Okay.
What kind of power are you needing?
Just mostly, she has big outside speakers and a computer so she can hook in to play the music, to play the music from the score.
So what I would do is I would encourage you to go down and see what is there.
Okay.
And make sure that it is going to meet your needs. It's down on the field directly, it's over by where we park.
Okay, I thought, I thought that's where it was. I'll bring, I'll bring my husband, the electrician.
Yeah. Check that out and make sure it's, that it meets what he needs. Yeah.
Okay.
That's going to be wonderful.
It probably is, but I would just double check it.
And it's going to be free, we're just going to ask for donations. So that's kind of a neat part of it, especially in this time right now that we're going through. We do plan to follow COVID protocols that are in place with the state. I don't know if you have any specific ones, if you allow us to do it, if you have any specific ones for the town that you would want us to follow. We have a lot of volunteers to keep people separated, but maybe that is not as big of an issue for you as it has been for us, so.
We have been requiring people to follow whatever the state and CDC guidelines are at the time.
Okay.
So that's what you should follow.
Okay, and that's what we've been doing at the studio too. We've been open all year. And we've just been trying to follow the rules, so.
Exactly.
Good.
Well, I make a motion to have The Dance Factory have Cobley Field for those dates and times that they request.
I second that.
Heather is the motion and Lee Daken is the second. Any further discussion on this issue?
I would just.
Like so much fun.
I've been to quite a few Dance Factory presentations, and I've always enjoyed myself as much as I thought I wouldn't. But they've always. They've been a blast. And, you know, it must be hard not to be able to have all those indoor events and stuff. I remember.
Yeah.
It's always a big one also.
It's giving, it's giving another chance for perform, you know, because we've had to cancel so many things this year, like recitals for two years in a row. It gives kids a chance to still perform, which has really been great. We did the Nutcracker down at the Bellas Falls Theater. And it was, it actually came out great. They taped it through SAPA, did it for us, and put it together. And you almost can't tell that it was done in pieces, so.
Wow.
Yeah. Making it work.
Does she still go to the elementary school in Chester and do her classes?
She does a lot of that in different places, yeah. She goes into a lot of schools, which is really incredible.
It is incredible.
Yeah. She's a fantastic teacher and a really neat person, so.
Yeah, I agree.
Greatful to have her, I must say.
Great.
It's been a tough year with COVID, with the live entertainment and music and the performing arts. And it's good to see that they're coming up with ways to get, to still have the stuff presented out there.
Yeah.
So any further discussion? Any other comments? All those in favor of the motion as stated, please say aye.
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 I didn't think so. So Kate, thank you, and good luck with the presentation. We'll see you down there.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it, everyone.
Thank you.
Bye bye, bye.
Next item on our agenda is a coin drop being requested by Ruckup. And George Legace is here to speak to that event. And I know we granted permission, it was last year, George, I believe?
Yes, it was, last year.
And you're looking for basically the same, same type of deal?
Same size deal, same location, because that's the only place the state will allow us to have it.
Yep.
And I've already talked with Mark Perkins. I wanted to move up a little bit closer to the cement bridge there by the River Road. And he nixed that one right off the bat, and he said down there. By Mansfield Road to the other Mountain View Road in that area there. I have, we have friends of ours that lives on Mountain View Road. And they told me that the only thing that they noticed was that there was a little bit more traffic that day on Mountain View Road because people were turning into Mountain Road and skirting around us. But other than that, I haven't heard of anything else, any problems or anything else. We did have some people going in and out of the road that we were by, and we actually moved out of the way and let them come through. And so all in all, I think we had a very good day down there.
So George, can you just give us, for people that aren't aware, a little bit about your organization and what you do?
Yep. Ruckup is a nonprofit veterans organization. We're based out of Keene, New Hampshire. We have a counselor down there, and we do advocacy. We have an outreach program. Last year, we helped 70 veterans maintain housing. We helped them with electric bills, fuel bills, phone bills, or rent, or whatever. We kick in $500 per vet. We work with other units or other organizations in the area, Vermont, New Hampshire, Massachusetts, and Connecticut, and get them to help donate monies. So our outreach program is very effective. We have a food shelf down there. We offer food. Last year, we handed out about six ton of food to veterans and some clothing to veterans and stuff. Our counselor does one-on-one and group therapies. We also work with veterans for AA and drug abuse. We have a program down there on Monday evenings. We help vets fill out all of their paperwork that's needed to put in for VA claims and also for social security claims. And everybody that works down there is not paid. We're all volunteers. We put in lots of hours down there, especially our counselor and his wife. We put in lots of hours down there, especially our counselor and his wife. They're, they're putting in, you know, 20 hours a day some days down there working to help the vets. So it's pretty good. It's all run, run by vets, worked by vets. We have two non-veterans that are on the board of directors. One is my wife, who is our secretary. And the other one is a lady who is what they call a blue star mom. She has three boys that was in the military. And she's also on our board down there. So we're veterans helping veterans. And we meet the need of the veterans between going to Manchester, New Hampshire, or to White River. We actually help veterans get into those areas if need be. And we also provide some transportation if necessary. So, uh, we're down there, you know. He does, uh, one-on-ones one week and groups the following week. And it's a pretty good program. It's a great program, so.
Well, thanks for that little summary on, on your organization. I would entertain a motion to, uh, grant the request from Ruckup for their coin drop on the date stated.
What were the dates?
Could I ask a question first? Before we get into that?
Go ahead.
I know that we have a coin drop set up in this town by the American Legion for the end of May. And so my concern or question might be, this is coming pretty much on the heels of that. Uh, you know, less than two months, like six weeks away, there'll be another one. So I, I wonder if this could be changed to another time, maybe the end of August or something like that.
That's, that's a viable option and we're open to that. Do it in August. I have no coin drops at this point slated for August. August is an open month. And that was one of the things that I was looking at, that, uh, you know, if they did think it was a problem, I didn't realize the Legion was doing a coin drop in May. So yes, that would be something we would definitely consider. I would have to look at the calendar and get back to you on a date in August, but yes, we could definitely do August.
So the current date is July 10 with a rain date of July 11. And you're considering moving it to August if there's too much.
Yeah.
Great, thank you. So the question becomes, what's the consensus of the board on how you want to go with this?
Well, do we need to determine the dates or can we just say at a date that's convenient to everybody?
Well, the application is specific. It requires a date and time.
Okay.
And then the state has to sign off on the date and time and so does the chief.
This one's a little different.
Yep.
So has this already been signed off by?
No, nobody, no.
This is just the beginning of the whole process.
Yeah. We've got time. I mean, if you could get it back to us for the next meeting.
Yeah.
Yeah. And, and at the next meeting, because it's been presented and he's already spoken to the issue, if it's just a matter of, of bookkeeping and paperwork, uh, you know, George, you're welcome to come to the meeting for sure, but I would figure you'd have to. It would just be a formality on our end. So maybe you guys figure out a date and we'll put it on for our next meeting.
I'm gonna talk with them down there in Keene and, and come up with a date.
Sure.
Available. But that's not a problem.
Yep. You, you figure out your date and then get back to me with the revised application and I'll get it before the board.
Not a problem. And I've got, I left copies of the insurance certificate. I can get that changed for August as well. That's not a problem to the insurance company. And, uh.
Lee, that was a good point.
Thank you very much. I appreciate that.
Thanks, Arnie.
Very good point.
Thank you.
So they're, they're gonna work on the date and formalize what works better or what time would work in August for both the town and, and the organization. And so when this comes back before the board, it'll just be a formality, just to make the motion and to approve the, the new date. So it sounds like that's the route we're gonna go.
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
Works. I'm happy with that.
So we'll just table the motion for now with the.
Yep. You didn't, I don't think you got it.
We didn't make it.
You didn't really make the motion, so.
No.
You didn't get a second.
Which is fine.
Okay.
Yep.
All right, George. Appreciate your time and.
Thank you guys. Thank you all very much. I appreciate your consideration.
Sure. Thank you.
Financial review. It's our first quarter of 2021. Julie, how's it looking?
We, we are doing well. Um, we have, uh, department heads have limited spending, um, as much as they can. Um, and with the new way that we're paying the schools and, uh, the revision to the way we are paying invoices now, um, we've been able to, in our fund balance, our healthy fund balance, we've been able to come here to May 5 without the need of a tan, uh, which is really great. We may not make it to mid-July, uh, but, uh, we're gonna keep plugging along. And if we end up needing a tan, it will be a small amount in very short period of time. So, uh, we're very happy about that. But financials are looking good. There's not, where you'll see that we're pretty heavily underspent at this point. But that's just simply because we're trying to delay those purchases until we get tax revenue in to not borrow money to pay, to pay for things that we can hold off on, so.
Well, I remember years when the 10, we were, we're talking about 10 notes.
Over a million, yeah.
Of a million dollars.
Yeah.
That's amazing.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, interest is cheap right now, but we just want to get ourselves into the habit of not having to borrow if we don't, if we don't need to. And that's, this is definitely, um, a good argument for needing a healthy fund balance because that's been a big help. You know, having that in there was a big help.
And interest rates are not always gonna be low.
Correct.
So, yeah.
And nobody wants to spend money they don't have.
Correct. Exactly. Yep.
So are there any questions or concerns from any of the board members regarding the first three months on the financial report or the, or the balance sheet for that matter? I mean, we can go through it page by page, but I think like what Julie said, most of it seems like we're underspending. Usually what I look for is that percentage of, uh,
Exactly.
of what you, what you're allowed, allotted for the year and what we have spent. And most of the time, it's almost always under. And the times that it is over, it's usually for the one fight that you buy and you spend for the year and it doesn't change from there.
And any things that are slight anomalies, I've tried, made a note in the comment section, as we did last year. So hopefully that's helpful. I mean, a couple of things that, to point out that we are doing, number one, we will be holding a tax sale this spring. We're being pretty picky about what properties we're doing that with.
This is one, just one?
We will be holding a tax sale. There's gonna be several properties. But the properties this time around, uh, we're really streamlining. The properties this time around are gonna be properties that, um, have several years of delinquency. They have been given ample, ample opportunity to call and make a payment arrangement. So these properties going for tax sale are people who just multiple years and have not responded. We have people that are, you know, paying 50 bucks a month. I mean, it's not doing much, but it's something and it's keeping them going forward. So you don't, you know, you don't have to pay it off in a year. We're being very generous with that because we can be right now. But there are some properties that we definitely need, we need to proceed with this. And towns, other towns are doing this as well, just not being as aggressive with the ones that we're putting up. But there are some egregious ones that we need to get under control.
Yeah. And, and basically if they reach out to the town and they give us a reason and, and set up a payment.
Correct.
We're, we're pretty flexible when it comes to it as far as, you know, grace period in time. It's when you have no response.
Correct.
No, no input at all.
And multiple years.
And they just disregard what's happening. And then, then it becomes, well, what, if it's not fair to everybody else.
Correct.
I mean, you're looking at, what do we have, like almost of a quarter of a million dollars in delinquent taxes?
Wow.
Yep. So we need to get on it. It can quickly get out of control. Um, you know, we did no tax sales last year. Um, so, and, and I've been on some meetings, uh, with fellow town managers in the area. This was a topic of conversation and everybody was in agreement. If we skip another year, um, you're gonna potentially have an issue. So we are.
Julie?
The most egregious. Yeah.
Um, it's Heather. Um, do you have an approximate number of properties?
Um, at this point, I would say there's seven or eight. I think it's about right, Amy, isn't it?
Yeah, I think so.
I think it's seven or eight at this point. Normally, if we were doing the properties that we would normally be doing, I'd probably be starting with about 20. Uh, but we're only, because we did start with several and several people called and set up payment arrangements. Now we're down to seven or eight and most of them are at least three years delinquent at this point.
Wow.
It's a tough thing to do sometimes. I mean, I know, I realize people are in dire straits sometimes and there's no way out.
But the average, the problem too is the average property, once you're at three years delinquent, you're owing over $10,000. So to get caught up on that, um, is very, it's very expensive for them because you're, you're paying interest, um, monthly and then they're not gonna be able to pay 2021's tax bill. And that adds more and another 9% of penalty and interest. And so once you start getting past two years, um, it's very difficult for them to get caught up. Uh, so we try not to let it go that far, so.
And what's the process if somebody purchases one of these? Is there any recourse for the original owner to come back and?
One year.
You have one year right of redemption. So if you were to come to a tax sale and we are putting my property up for tax sale, um, you come in, you bid on my property. So that day, you pay the amount of taxes or do, or whatever the bid amount was. That, I then have one year to redeem my property from tax sale. But the state says that when I redeem, um, I redeem at the, at the amount that you paid plus 1% interest per month. So if I redeem at month five, I have to redeem the, say, $7,000 for my taxes plus 5% of that. It's an incentive, uh, to get your property redeemed quickly, but it's also, um, you've just made 5% interest on your money. You can't really do that many places. So, but there is a one-year right of redemption. And during that one year, you have no interest into my property. So you can't go on my property. You can't evict me yet. I have a year.
So if somebody were to buy one, they couldn't do anything with the property for a year?
366 days. On the 366th day.
Then it's yours.
You would get into tax collector's deed from the town. And then the eviction process, if there's, if it's, there's a property, there are people living, the eviction process would be on you to evict. The town doesn't get involved in that. And the property at that point is as-is.
Okay.
So if that property owner, if I decided to destroy my property, you are acquiring it as-is. The town bears no liability in that.
Right, right. So I don't mean to chase this rabbit too far, but, um, in the event that there was somebody who was occupying squatting, renting or whatever, is there some, I, I know that it's an issue for property owners to try to evict renters who are way behind. I mean, is that the same thing? It would be the same process to evict a tenant or squatter or whatever?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Whether they're owners or renters.
Or squatters.
Yeah, but it's still an eviction process afterwards.
Correct. Yeah, you'd have to follow the Vermont eviction laws.
Yeah, interesting.
Yep.
Which means it's very difficult to get rid of them.
Well, it's, it's interesting. In all of my, like 16 years of doing this, the, um, we have only ever had one property that ran into an eviction issue. Typically, if there are people living in the home, um, there's typically a mortgage, so the bank will redeem. Um, or they figure out a way to pay it. Typically, the properties that end up, that end up fully going to tax sale and selling is land only or a vacation home.
Because the bank doesn't want to lose their interest.
No.
Right.
Because that's the other thing. If there are any liens other than federal, uh, federal IRS liens or state tax liens, if there are any other liens on that property, they go away after one year. Which is why there is, um, a real liability on the town to make sure that we have done a full one-owner search and determined any encumbrances on that property and that those people are properly notified. Yeah.
Aren't the taxes paid through escrow?
Not always. That's not a requirement. Nope, not a requirement.
Can we hear the question, please?
Yeah.
What was that, Heather?
She has a question.
Oh, can we hear, can someone repeat the question?
Oh, sorry. Sean asked about escrows. Are they, if there's a bank, are, aren't the taxes escrowed? But not, escrow is not required.
No, no.
Thank you.
Usually if you finance more than 80%, it's required.
That was my fault, Sean. I gotta make you go up to the microphone next time.
So you, when is this going to happen, these tax sales?
Uh, well, there's a lengthy process, so, and, and I'm teaching Amy how to take over the tax sale process. So, uh, we'll be looking at tax sales in early June.
Okay.
Yeah. So.
I'm wondering, I'm wondering if I should wait for a minute, but I have some issues with some, a piece of property within the town limits that seems to be lived in with campers and cars and living full-time. And I don't even know what sources they have for water or anything else, but it, I wonder if we know about this.
So you could email me.
Okay.
Or call me tomorrow.
Okay.
That would be Kathy Hasbrook, our interim zoning administrator. But if you want to talk to me tomorrow, Lee, I can certainly chat. Chances are, we do know about it.
Okay.
We've got a list going.
Yeah, good.
Yep. Of some properties. Again, with COVID, there was so much you couldn't do. So again, now here we are getting ready to play catch-up, so. But, but definitely.
I'll give you a call tomorrow.
Yep. The only other thing that I wanted to point out on here is under ambulance revenue.
It's down a little bit.
Huh?
It's down a little bit.
It's down. So one of the things that, uh, Amy does our ambulance billing and one of the things that, um, she has been looking into for me is, um, other options that we have for collecting ambulance revenue. It's a really finicky process, a lot of rules and laws around who you can collect from, who you can't, when Medicare's involved, VA, you know, VA bills, all that kind of stuff. So Amy has reached out to some surrounding ambulance services, um, and has learned and spoken with an agency, uh, that specializes in collection of revenue, um, ambulance revenue. It, cost-wise for the town balances pretty reasonably with what we pay for the programs, for the software that we have. We wouldn't need that anymore. We would pay them. Um, it's 5% of what they collect. And then they also have a connection with a collection agency, which we don't currently have. So if, if revenue is not collected, bills are not paid, they then work with the collection agency, um, who still takes another percentage. But right now, we're just writing it off because we don't have that access. So, um.
We don't have it because we never pursued it though, I, I would think. No? I mean, it's, it's available.
It is available to us. Um, it is available to us. But then what you're gonna, it's not as efficient.
No, no.
The process is not as efficient.
And it's not a fun business to be in.
No. Um, and like I said, around, around ambulance billing, there's actually a lot of rules. So it, it will actually probably in the end cost us less, increase our revenue. Amy and Sil and Amanda will be, uh, meeting with this agency, um, to talk about the reporting and just kind of fine tune the logistics and the details. So just an FYI, we may be changing that system to something that's more efficient and can get us some more money. Um, and, and Amy, have I missed anything?
I, I know back a few years, we did look at our charges that we had and they're comparable to the area services that are out there as far as what we charge.
I'm gonna let Amy.
Um, I looked into that as well and I made a spreadsheet. Did I give you the folder, Julie, or did I take it back?
You took it back.
Okay. I'll give that to you tomorrow. And I called around to other ambulance services around to see what they charge. And we're pretty close. I mean, a few are really like Woodstock charges, like crazy amounts of money for their ambulance service, but it's Woodstock, you know? So I think it's a good idea to go move to this company because some things I don't really, um, when we get denials and things, like I don't know how to handle them sometimes. Like to read them, they're all different. They all say different reasons why they're denied. And sometimes I have a hard time, you know, you have to call the insurance company and they're, put you on hold forever. You can't talk to a person. And those are the kinds of things that this company will know how to handle.
Well, we're not in the insurance billing business.
True.
In Chester, you know?
And, and we're not in the collection business either.
Correct. There are businesses that do that. And as long as it's not gonna cost us more, you know.
It actually sounds like we're gonna be doing better.
I think we're gonna be doing better. So we're, we're gonna look at trying it for a year and just kind of seeing what that looks like and, you know, resourcing that out.
Another, another, um, universal healthcare.
Um, I think a while back when we were talking about this, this was years ago, there were, were some people that said, you know, our, our, um, taxes are being, our, our taxes subsidize the ambulance service. And so I think there was some, oh, problems with the thought of sending people to collections. And so that's, you know, I think we should really pursue, um, insurances for sure and have people who know how to do that because it is convoluted and, uh, difficult at times. But I also wonder about pursuing to the point of collections, if, if it's a small amount with the, the negative PR. I just want to be sensitive towards that. would the negative PR, I just want to be sensitive towards that. And a few years back, we discussed it, and there were some complaints or something. I can't remember exactly.
Okay. We can certainly look into that. I know that our bad debt write-off is fairly large, and it, and it seems like a fair amount of that can be collected. But if you don't want to pursue a collection agency.
Well, I just think we should look at, like, the number, last year it was 400 or something. How many are we billing? How many are we being reimbursed for? With this new system, you know, are we getting more money so you don't have to go to collections? And I don't think with Medicaid, you can go to collections, but those are details that I think we should just really understand before we send taxpayers to collection.
Okay, we'll do it.
Sure. And a lot, and I agree with you, Heather, and a lot of times, if it was coming out of a person's pocket, for sure, it would be a whole different scenario, but usually it seems like it's the insurance companies just sending out form letters saying, denied, 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 hoping that you'll.
And that, I fully agree, we should get people who know how to do it, because it's an art, really. But the collections part, I think we should just really get more information before we, before I feel comfortable pushing the button to say yes.
Okay, so we will, we'll proceed conversations with the billing agency. We'll hold off on sending to collections until we've done a little more research.
Yeah, thank you.
Sounds good. Any other questions or concerns on the general fund quarterly report?
Well, it really looks good. It's the first quarter, so I don't have a lot of questions at this time.
Yep.
Neither do I. Doing a good job.
Everybody all set?
All good.
We'll go on to a little housekeeping, cemetery deeds. I don't know where I put the one that I had. I think it was just one or two. There was a couple?
There's a couple.
So we're gonna need someone to come in for a signature on these.
Um, I, yes. Lee, Lee, I will need you to stop in.
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow, if you could.
Sure.
Okay. I was hoping for seven, but that's okay.
Looking for seven what?
To get out.
Seven o'clock.
Your mic is on.
I keep forgetting there's a mic in front of me somewhere.
I'm lazy. I want to go home.
Is that it?
I think so.
I was surprised at how many lots are being requested, and our cemeteries can hold that?
Uh, yes.
Great.
Yeah, they have to pick which, which available lot before we give the deed, so.
But each is, each of these is for a different, each of these is for a different cemetery in our.
Correct. Yep, sometime, yeah.
Okay, next item on the agenda is future agenda items, or any new business that any board member would like to have on.
Well, I have a letter here from the Chester Snowmobile Club, and I know that wasn't on the agenda necessarily, but they've written us a letter, and is that just an FYI?
That's just information for you, that they have invited the select board to their landowner barbecue. So it's not really public, it's not a public invitation, it's an invitation to board members.
Okay, great. I wasn't clear on that.
Yep.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
So at a recent meeting, we talked about the gravel pit, and where do we stand on that?
So the appeal has been filed.
Okay.
So we're just in that process.
And then can we start, have we started doing work up there yet?
We have not started work up there. We have lined up the logger. It'll be Brian Smith, who will be logging, and he's just, we're just waiting for his timeline. He's on a job now, but that'll be the first step. We'll be logging the property first. Yep.
There's no stay on the permit. We're allowed to do whatever we need to do, according to the regulations that are on the permit now, but we're just trying to amend some of the details on there and stuff.
Yeah, but we can proceed, and we, you know, we're working with Brian Smith.
So it'll be this year to prep everything, get everything lined up, the roads in, clear cut, and then next year probably be the first year that we start playing around in there.
So how far out is Basin Brothers relative to crushing? Do we need to get on their schedule now?
Kirby stays in relative communication with them, because we're interested. We are gonna, when it comes to crushing, we are gonna do a bid process, because there are a couple places around that do it.
Okay.
Just to make sure we're getting the best price, but, yeah, yeah. So Kirby is in communication with those, those companies.
Okay, great.
Yes, I have a, go ahead, Heather.
So, coin drops.
Yes, that's, that was gonna be my question.
So years ago, and I'm talking years, there was an issue with the state. I don't think the select board chose to do coin drops. Then this gentleman that presented tonight came, and we decided to, and we talked about having a policy of how many a year, some of these things, what kind of organizations. And I know the Legion is doing one, and now we're having, I'm sorry, I don't have the agenda, I forget their name, likely doing another, but I think we really should discuss how many coin drops we want a year, and have a little bit of a guideline. I hate to say policy, but.
I think policy's okay.
Okay, policy, guideline, you know, something to direct the board, because I don't think we want one, you know, every month. So it's just, and I think, Arnie, do you remember that we had some issues a long time ago?
We did have this discussion before, Heather. You're right. And I don't remember if we finalized anything, but I think that's a good point.
So I'd like that on the agenda.
Okay.
Yeah, I would, too. That's what I was looking at on my agenda today, and looked at the, everything that we were gonna go through, and thought, wow, you know, do we want two coin drops in one season in Chester? I mean, you know, that's a, I don't, I'm not surprised people who live on the side roads were cutting across and going to where they live, or wherever they wanted to go. But I think it deserves a discussion.
Sure.
And there are a whole lot of fabulous organizations, and the reason I didn't bring it up when we were talking to the gentleman is because I just think it should be, you know, on a high level, looking at what we want to do as a town, not, I'm not criticizing any specific organization.
Right. And I just thought it was good to try to, at least this year, give an alternative date. I mean, you know, just because they, they were close together.
No, they're both very good points, especially the spacing them out, which falls back to having some kind of guidelines or some kind of policy, so we don't oversaturate it, and it really becomes a burden, as opposed to a worthy fundraiser.
Right.
Okay, I'll add it to the next agenda.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Very much.
The Greenhouse Group will be here at their next meeting to give an update.
The next one or the one after?
They asked for the second one in May.
They did?
Yeah.
Because I wasn't sure whether they had finalized some of their details.
I received an email from Robert Need.
Robert?